I'd like to call a reading to order. Do you have a motion to open the regular business meeting, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Bill Harris.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kara. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Remain standing for a moment in silence. Bill Harris, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to our country and to the United States of America. And to our fellow citizens, stands the proclamation of the law, in this long, liberating, just as law.
May I have a motion to approve the board meeting agenda, please?
Come in.
Moved by Nantani. Second.
Judy.
Judy, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First this evening, our presentations. Just Jocelyn? Okay. Let's start with our student board representative. Jocelyn Decker.
Hi. Hi, my name's Jocelyn Decker. And I'm in eleventh grade. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the board and the administrators for the opportunity to serve on the board as representative. I have a few congratulations to give out. Congratulations to the girls varsity volleyball team on their OCL class- Hi, my name's Jocelyn Decker. And I'm in eleventh grade. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the board and the administrators for the opportunity to serve as a representative. I have a few congratulations to give out. The first congratulation goes to the girls varsity volleyball team on their OCL class B championship win. My second congratulations goes out to our Port Jervis Raider football team. They beat U-Pauls last Friday thirty-four to seven to win their fourth straight Section Nine championship. They will now move on to play Pleasantville in Arlington this Friday at four P.M. for the regional championship game. Good luck. We have a few upcoming events at our high school. This Thursday, we have our volunteer service fair assembly. We also have our financial aid night. And ADAC is presenting a hidden mischief room for all of Port Jervis City School District. Friday will be our volunteer service fair and our first market period report card distribution. This will be online on school board. On Monday, the twenty-first, it'll be a half day. It'll be parent-teacher conference in the afternoon. Tuesday is also a half day for us students. And it'll be the student voice committee meeting. Tuesday is also the senior day delivery for their class pass. Wednesday is Thanksgiving break for students, as well as Thursday and Friday. And on December first is the positive incentive event for our students. And on December sixth is the high school winter concert.
Jocelyn, thank you very much. Great, great update. Thank you. Next is a presentation, HB Drama Club Preview, Willie Wonka Junior. Now, Bill Harris will be announcing that.
Good evening. Come with me, and you'll see a world of pure imagination. Take a look, and you'll see into your imagination. Once upon chocolate time, a long, long chocolate time ago, the golden age of chocolate began. Ron Dahl's Willie Wonka Junior follows enigmatic candy manufacturer Willie Wonka as he staged the contest by hiding five golden tickets in his five scrumptious candy bars. Whomever comes up with these tickets will win a free tour of the Wonka factory, as well as a lifetime supply of chocolate. Who could take a sunrise, sprinkle it with dew, cover it with chocolate, or a miracle or two? Wonka can. Lea Lisberg plays Willie Wonka. She takes Charlie Bucket, played by Stella Sheehan, and Grandpa Joe, played by Mitchell Cochran, and other ticket winners and their parents on an adventure of a lifetime. Tonight, we're going to perform two songs for you. Our first song is going to be Pure Imagination, sung by our own Willie Wonka, Lea Lisberg. And the second song is going to be Golden Ticket, sung by Stella Sheehan, who is playing Charlie Bucket, and Mitchell Cochran, who is our Grandpa Joe. So, Lea?
Come with me, and you'll be in a world of pure imagination. Take a look, and you'll see into your imagination. We'll begin with a spin, traveling in a world of my creation. What we'll see will define explanation. If you want to view paradise, simply look around and view it. Anything you want to do it. Want to change the world? There's nothing to it. There is no place I know to compare your imagination. Living there, you'll be free if you truly wish to be. I am Willie Wonka, the greatest candy maker of all time. Thought my life could be anything but catastrophe. Suddenly, I began to seek a bit of good love for me, because I've got a golden ticket. I've got a golden twinkle in my eye. I never had a chance to shine, never had a song to sing, but suddenly has the world as mine. What an amazing thing, because I've got a golden ticket. I've got a golden sun up in the sky. You did it, Charlie. I never thought I'd see the day when I face the world and say, "Good morning, look at the sun." I never thought that I would be splattered above a luxury, because I had said it couldn't be done. But it can be done. Yes, it can be done. We never had a chance to shine, never had a song to sing, suddenly I've- I've got a golden ticket. I've got a golden chance to make my way. And I've got a golden ticket, it's a golden day.
Thank you very much. How about a hand for our performance?
Bill, thank you very much. Kids, that was great, and we look forward to seeing you. Next on our agenda tonight is a presentation by Mr. Scott Duhl from BCA Architects on the Capitol Project. Scott?
Thank you. There's no, no way I can follow that. Thanks for- Yeah, there's no way I can follow that adequately, so. But we do have a, a presentation tonight, just to give you a little bit of an update on the middle school project. You know, we've been under construction now for five months or so, and it's coming along well. I know that you've seen the, the community has probably seen the steel going up for the addition. But tonight, I wanted to just go through a little bit about what it will look like when it's finished, and show you some of the colors and some of the things that have been, we've been working on to look in the, down the road here when we get to the end. So, this first image, this is something that probably many of you have seen before. This is just a rendering of, of looking at the addition and what it will look like, with the original building in the background. And just a quick overview, this, I'm just going to show you the, the different floor levels, but the addition is over here on the, on the left, with the gym, lobby, main entrance, or main administration, locker rooms, cafeteria, stage, and kitchen. And then, the original building will be retrofitted into classrooms. On this floor, there'll also be the nurse. We're creating a new exit that'll go out the back to the back parking lot. And then, down at this end of the building will be the band and the choral spaces with classrooms in between. And on the second floor, more classrooms, and, you know, we'll have new toilet rooms in there. There'll also be a guidance suite and some special light classrooms here, some small breakout rooms for academic intervention services. And then, on the third floor, again, more classrooms for students. And then, in this corner, what used to be the cafeteria, that will be the library and the steam room. And we're building some new stairs to access the, all three floors at each end of the building, as well as rebuilding the stairs in the center. That used to just go up to the second floor, now they'll go to all three floors. There'll also be a new elevator in the addition, as well as the existing elevator down at the other end for accessibility. So, that's just a quick overview of the, of the floor plans. This rendering is just a, in the addition, sort of looking from the gym towards the cafeteria over here on the left. These are the main entrance doors and the main office, and then, looking down the corner where it connects to the existing school. Just gives you a sense of what it's, kind of what it'll look like when it's finished. This is kind of a color palette that we're using, so the, the floor tile in the lobby, the walls, accent colors will be red. We're trying to stay with the red whites and grays of the school colors for a lot of these. Case work will be this, this lighter color. And then, we'll have, wherever we have carpet, we'll be using these different types of tiles, carpet tiles. This is a rendering of the, the new gym, what that will look like. And this is just showing you one wall of the gym where, you know, you'll see the, the new wall pads. And we can put different types of logos on the wall. There'll be up on the top wall here, you'll see this, this grid pattern. This is a material called Cow Wall, which is a translucent wall panel. It lets in natural light, but it doesn't, it uses the light, so you don't get any bright spots on the floor. But it lets a lot of natural light in. This is a, a rendering of the new cafeteria. We'll be using lots of variation in the ceiling to help with acoustics in there. You know, obviously cafeteria can be a very loud place with a lot of children in there. So, the, the breaking of the ceiling helps, helps with the sound. You can see there's a glass wall here that looks out towards the lobby. Behind you, you can't see here, there's, you can see where the, the light is on the ground. There is, the, the glass wall looks out to the outside in the back of the building as well. So, when you walk in the front doors, you'll see right through the cafeteria, all the way to the back of the building towards the river. This is just showing some of the wall accents in the cafeteria, because, you know, there'll be elementary students in here. We wanted to make it a little more fun, so we've got, you know, these are acoustic wall panels, but we're using different colors and patterns, just to, to brighten up the space and make it a little bit nicer and richer space. This shows you some of the kitchen serveries, and we're putting, you know, all new kitchen casework in the building, so we'll be doing serving lines, and you can see the color scheme here, but it all ties together, works well together. And in the corridors of the existing building, we'll be putting in new LBT flooring, which is a, it's a vinyl flooring, but it's a, it's a thicker vinyl than what you used to see, and it wears really well. And we'll be doing some accents in there, and, and also looking at the, you know, walls keeping the same theme, so we think it'll look quite nice. Looking at the, just a, this is an elevation of looking at a typical corridor wall on the second and third floor, where we'll have new lockers, but at every door into the classroom, there'll be like a recess, and we'll have accent colors there and lighting as well, so it sort of gives a sense of arrival to each one of the classrooms, as well as making them accessible entrances. Right, right now, the way the building was built, the doors were too narrow for that. Restrooms will be tile with a darker tile at the bottom, and then, an accent band, and then, a lighter tile at the top. And the floor tile will be a porcelain tile. This shows a, a typical classroom. We'll have pendant-mounted lighting, lighting in there. Trying to keep the color palettes fairly neutral, because we know in an elementary school, there's lots of artwork and things that go on the wall, so that adds a lot of your color. And we also don't want it to be dated, you know, if you make it certain colors, it goes out of style. Just another view of a classroom. And then, flooring, we're, we're using a couple of different types of tile. Darker tile where the sinks are, and then, a lighter tile out in the, in the body of the room. In each classroom, there'll be some of this casework with a sink and, you know, tall cabinet storage and drawer storage. These were, came about through meeting with teachers and understanding what they wanted. So, this, this was, you know, brought about through lots of discussions with the teachers. And then, up on the third floor, where the existing cafeteria, it used to be a kitchen, this will become the library and steam space. This will be a fun space. There's lots of room up there. We're doing some, some neat things with the casework and with the lighting there to make it a fun space. There's also be a steam classroom up there that can open into the library or be closed off. And then, this shows the, the bandroom, which will be down on the first floor. And this is in the area where the existing auditorium is now. So, we'll be leveling the floor there and providing a nice large bandroom. Also, providing on the other side of the wall will be a, a nice space for choral as well. And we're, we're brand-new nurses' suite as well. This is a nice clean functional space. And I think that's my last slide. So, I just wanted to give you a brief update on what we're looking for. These are some of the colors. We've been, we'll be getting a lot of some of those in from the contractors, so there's a lot of things that need to be chosen and selected and ordered. So, this is where we, we stand at this point. Obviously, if there's any question on any of this, you know, please let us know.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
The glass that is in the cafeteria, is there going to, it's nice if we want to see out, but what if we don't want someone to see in with the provisions we're making, so that we can-
So, all the, all the window blinds, all the areas of windows will have shades that can be closed from the inside. But we don't, as far as like, they're not, there's not any automatic tinting or anything like that.
And the other question was, we've talked about this, but I don't recall it. I'm just thinking about it now. The automatic locks on the door, that's going to be-
Oh, button locks?
Yep.
Yeah, the hardware, so there's a whole emergency she-what set up, you know, in the hardware, basically, so. But those are some of those things that we have to find to at the, at the time of, as we get closer to opening too. But we did talk about all that, and what the hardware was going to be, and how that was going to be, you know, the ability to lock down the building, all of that. That was built in from the beginning. Any other questions?
No, I just wanted to let the public know, I mean, as I'm sure everybody's heard, we ran into a lot of extra work with asbestos containment stuff and some structural issues, but Scott's team is on top of that, and things are moving ahead.
We just deal with, you know, if issues come up, we have to deal with them, and we are, as a team, and we'll get through them.
Thank you, Scott. Really appreciate you, all your efforts on this.
Thank you.
Who do you have with you? Okay, Scott, thank you again.
Thank you.
Our third presentation canceled due to weather. Next is public comment. We have one speaker tonight, Lisa Perkowski.
I'm going to preface this by saying I had no idea that Willie Wonka was going to be here, but the universe has aligned for me for once. Good evening. My name is Lisa Perkowski, and I'm an alumni, parent, and taxpayer in the Port Jervis City School District. I am here tonight to ask the board and the administration to reconsider the decision to remove the middle school auditorium from the Capitol Project. Music education has played an important role, not only in my life, but in the life of my youngest child and the lives of countless Port Jervis students, both past and present. Numerous Hall of Famers on the wall outside can be tied to the music program inherent at Port Jervis, and countless graduates have left our halls with memories and the benefits afforded to them by being part of the Port Jervis music and performance programs. This is why I was happy to see in 2019 a new performance space in the Capitol Project. In fact, I was happy to see that the plan included something that benefited all types of students. Athletic students were getting new facilities, technology-minded students were getting new stream spaces, readers and researchers were getting modern library spaces, and our music students were not only getting adequate practice spaces, but more importantly, an additional auditorium. I was so pleased to see the completeness of this plan, that I voted not only yes for the initial Capitol Project in 2019, but also yes for the extra funds to be added to it in 2022. So, imagine how surprised I was to recently learn that the new middle school auditorium space might be eliminated, and plans were being made for that space to become a multipurpose room with nothing very performancy in it, other than a portable stage that could be set up when needed. Apparently, this is to save $2 million and create a guidance suite where the stage is claimed to go, even though a guidance suite exists in the 2019 plans. This is not what taxpayers voted for, nor, I would guess, what was sent to state end for approval in 2019. Before you assume I am not understanding things, let me assure you that I understand. I understand this Capitol Project was greatly impacted by COVID. I understand the costs of things budgeted in 2019 are not the costs of things in 2022. I understand this is a project inherited by the new board members and the new administration, who might have a different focus than their predecessors. I understand that plans were created by architects and engineers who might not have fully appreciated what the conversion of a cafeteria to an auditorium entail, and added it simply to please the previous administration. And I do not take any of those things lightly. However, I also understand the following. I understand the Board of Education has a published goal to improve student programs, including, I would assume, the music program. I understand that the board has published goals to educate the whole child. I assume that means mentally, physically, and extracurricularly, with programs that center around their interests, such as music and performing arts. I understand the board has a published goal to be a vital asset to the community, giving the community, I would think, a place to gather and assemble if needed. I also understand that every piece of information that was mailed home and presented to the voters regarding this project clearly states there will be a middle school auditorium. It is my understanding that by having the current middle school empty during reconstruction, time and money is being saved, even with the hiccups, perhaps as much as a million dollars. For reading the most recent auditor's report, I understand the district has over eighteen million in the fund balance. Basic math helps me to understand that if two million was taken from that, we would still be $10 million over what the state would like to see. Furthermore, I understand that the $10 million voted approved, voters approved in 2022 is approximately $2 million over what the district anticipated needing. And while I am not an engineer, I understand that digging out a floor to have stadium-style seating may not be feasible. But I also understand that even Carnegie Hall has forty rows of level flooring before their sloping begins. So, I'm sure solutions exist. I understand that much like our gym and athletic field spaces, our current auditorium is overbooked on a consistent basis. And I understand, finally, that the Capitol Project is solving the athletic space shortage by giving our school community an unusable gym on East Main Street and a new field complex here on the 209 campus. Yet, our shortage of auditorium, performance, and assembly space will continue when this project is complete. What I do not understand is how a district can have these goals, ask for support and votes, and then toss aside an aspect of a project that voters wanted and approved. We once had an administrator who asked the voters to approve a project during a time when budgets were being voted down. That administrator told the voters something to the effect of, "If you trust me with your support, I pledge to you that this project will be carried through as promised." That project was carried through as promised, and the administrator was trusted again, because what the voters approved was what the voters received. I will tell you that if this new auditorium is removed from this project, I, a voter who has for twenty-six years voted yes for every single thing this district has ever asked, will never support a project again, and I will let my fellow taxpayers know that. It is my sincerest hope that we don't have to get to that point. I hope I receive word that after having this issue brought to the table, the board and the administration will invite the district's music department professionals to have a serious face-to-face conversation where they are heard and listened to. I hope the district comes to see how a multipurpose room, instead of a middle school auditorium, will negatively impact our music and performance programs, the availability of additional and much-needed gathering space in the district, and the education of our children. And finally, after a grand ribbon cutting, I hope I can one day attend a wonderful student performance in our new middle school auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. John?
Okay. Just so you know, Lisa, this all came about because the music department came to me and said, "That space is not big enough. It will not work for any of our concerts or any of our drama shows." And I was like, "What?" And they told me, "No, it's not big enough." And some of the details are, first of all, even digging the hole, jackhammering all the concrete, digging the hole to put the stadium-style seating in and have the stage be lower, it still was not big enough to have lights or rigging for scene changes or anything like that above it. So, they said, "We will not have any concerts there, because also, the stage area wouldn't be big enough for the band or the chorus." So, really, it would be for talent shows, class meetings, assemblies, and things of that nature. But it would not relieve any of the pressure on the auditorium for drama shows or for concerts. It was only going to have about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred seats. It was going to be about 2.8 million to do that. The guidance suite is not going to be where that multipurpose or concert room was. It's going to be where the kitchen actually is, just down the hall a little bit from there. We are looking at what would it cost to build a real auditorium. Not saying we're going to do it, but we're looking at the cost of it. And we built it off the end of the building where the ASK library currently is. We moved the library somewhere else. But it's over $5 million for a real auditorium with 500 seats. So, we've got a lot on our plate, but this all came about, but before you spend 2.8 million, just so you know, we're not using it for concerts or for drama shows. And I was like, "Holy jeez." So, we put the brakes on it real quick and just said, "Let's not do anything with that." So we put the brakes on it real quick and just said, "Let's not do anything with that space right now until we can come up with a better plan about what we're gonna do." So that's the status of where everything is.
Thank you very much, John. All right, next are administrative reports. First is Assistant Superintendent Schools, Dr. John Bell.
All right, I also just wanted to say thank you, Scott, as he goes out, thanks for your presentation, thanks for all your help. Anybody that's lived in an old house knows what we're going through at the middle school. Like, we buy an old house, all the plaster and the newspaper and everything that's in the walls, and you have to cut it. I also wanna say thanks to Jim Van Horn, Jim is a district resident who's volunteered his time to take tons of pictures and drone footage of the middle school project. If you go on our website, right on the homepage, click on the Capital Project button or tab, you'll see tons and tons of pictures of all the work that's being done over at the middle school. So thanks to Jim for all his work on that. Next week, we're, sorry, this week, we're starting up our superintendent student advisory, where I go around to the four buildings and meet with groups of student leaders. And the big opening question is, "What would you do if you were superintendent? What would you change around here? What would you add? What would you delete? What would you approve?" So I look forward to going around to all four schools and meeting with the kids and getting their ideas. Mitchell, I'm sure I'll be seeing you, buddy. I also, to follow on, Jocelyn had said, I just wanted to say congratulations to all the fall athletes and all the fall coaches. They start their fall season in August. They were out here, remember, that was when we had no rain at all, and it was like a dust bowl out there, and they were practicing while everybody else was on summer vacation. So it takes a lot of dedication and giving up some of your summers, we appreciate it. And again, she highlighted the Section 9 champs for football. Volleyball went to the Section 9 semifinals, and the senior cheerleaders are at Disney World competing right now. So it's, it's been a fun fall, watching the kids do all those things. I also wanted to make mention about, we honored Ray Holic at a meeting a month or two ago. Ray's worked here for over 50 years, phys ed teacher, coach, athletic director, summer school principal, alt ed principal, he's done it all. And anybody that's had any dealings with Mr. Holic and would like to pay tribute, whether it's to leave a message, post photos, do a video, there's a link on our website, we're putting together a tribute to Mr. Holic. So anybody in the community, or employees, former students, who wanted to let you know that that's on our website, if anybody would like to partake in that. And then finally, Board Appreciation Month. Some people do it in October, we do it in November, because our order wasn't here in October. But your gifts are on your table from the district with the new PJ interlocking logo. So we hope you like your presents for Board Appreciation, thanks for everything you do for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Dr. Natasha Walkowitz.
Good evening. Just a few updates, November 9th, our reading committee reconvened this year to discuss the phonics portion of our reading and writing program. This committee has been around since last, not this past summer, but the summer before, where the committees worked together and joined to review various phonics programs, and selected our Wilson reading program to try out for our tiered interventions, as well as our special education programming as a supplement to our Teachers College Reading and Writing Program. We reconvened again to meet on the impact, our Wilson was kind of a slow rollout. For this year, we added extra people as we had some transition in the district, and people are still getting trained and getting supplies for Wilson, just to do some of the COVID impacts from last year. The committee made some recommendations to expand our Wilson to a tier one through three intervention in addition to our current AIS in special education for K to three, and Administration is meeting next week to review this. Our education committee also met on November 9th to review several topics, but Ms. Carol Rapp will be reporting on this on the education committee board report portion of tonight's agenda. And our second conference day was on November 8th, was very successful, according to our initial survey. Before I left, we had about 88 participants give feedback on the survey before tonight. And also meeting with each grade level, department coordinator, teams, just to make plans for moving forward, for after-school support, as well as our next conference day support to continue the work of curriculum development. And our MTS committee, MTSS committee is meeting this Friday to begin writing a manual for our academic PPS and SEL initiatives, to create a district-wide MTSS manual. And if you haven't received yet, look in your emails, because our principal sent out this week the family engagement survey. He went out this week, bid email with a passcode to get in. We would appreciate hearing all your feedback on our district. As it is now, we had the same survey last year, so we're just looking at some data over the next few years just to see how we're improving in our academic and safety programs. And then finally, I just wanna extend a warm thank you to our Board of Education for Board Appreciation Month in November, for all that you do for our schools, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Natasha. Next on the agenda is the consent items. Item A is the minutes from the October 18th, '22 Board Regular Board Meeting. Item B, CSE minutes from 10:11, 10:12, 10:13, 10:14, 10:17, 10:18, 10:19, 10:20, 10:21, 10:24, 10:25, 10:26, 10:27, 10:28, 10:31, 11:1, 11:2, 11:3, and 11:4. Item C are the minutes from the CPSE meetings from 10:11, 10:18, 10:27, and 11:02. Item D is the treasurer's financial support for September. Item E is the treasurer's financial report for October. May I have the motion on these items?
I'll move it.
Moved by Judy.
I'll second.
Seconded by Flo, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven are personnel employment items. Item A is the leave of absence. Item B, resignation and instructional staff, position 204, art teacher. Item C is resignation, support staff, position 445, grounds worker. Item D is resignation, vacancy number 2421, co-curricular seventh-grade class advisor. Item E is appointment, administrative ACIS principals for the 2223 school year. Item F, vacancy 2421, co-curricular club advisor, coach intermural, hourly instructional positions for the 2223 school year. Item G is appointment, support staff, vacancy 2477, position 2847, probationary school monitor. Item H is appointment, support staff, vacancy 2491, position 375, teacher aide. Item I, disappointment, instructional staff, substitute teachers for the 2223 school year. Item J, appointment, support staff, substitute clerk typist, substitute teacher aide, substitute monitor. Item K, appointment, support staff, substitute cleaner. Item L, treasurer employment contract for the 2224 through 24 school years. Item M is the amendment to board docs, personnel agenda item from July 19, '22. Item N, amendment to board docs, personnel agenda item from July 19, '22. Item O, amendment to board docs, personnel agenda item from the August 23rd, '22. Item P is the amendment to board docs, personnel agenda item from September 6th. May I have a motion on these items, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Judy?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike Cockenberry, any questions or comments?
Just want-
Yes, Bill?
The Stock Market Club, is that new? I've never seen that before. I was mapping.
We had it, we had it in the middle school, and now we're adding one in the high school.
Oh.
It's a great program, I think, so, I mean, it really is.
And an interesting thing is, we're looking actually to see if the high school team of the Stock Market Club, if they could do, much like they do at college level, could they make stock recommendations for a portion of the money that the foundation would let, the PJ Educational Foundation would let the kids make investment decisions with a small amount of money, and see what they can do with it. Like, you hear that in the college level, the college of business, we like that at the high school level.
Great, I'm happy to pull that up.
Yeah, it's a great program, and I think it's, it's, you know, exciting for the kids to, you know, get into this and really, you know. Yeah.
It's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight are action items. Item A, approval to add CSE vendors, special ed, special ed solution. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Bill Harris?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan Dunn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is a food service agreement between the Port Jervis School District and Easter Seals Project Discovery. May I have a motion on this, please? Mike? Second?
I'll second.
Dan? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C is the annual financial audit report ending June 30th, 2022. May I have a motion on this? Second? Seconded by Flo, any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is a response to the 2122 management letter comments. May I have a motion on that, please? Dan? Second? Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E is the Port Jervis High School Winter in College Workshop Field Trip at the Adirondack High Peaks region, January 24th through 28th and 23rd. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Seconded by Flo. Seconded by Mike. All in favor on that?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is a senior class trip to Boston, Massachusetts, April 28th through 30th, 2023. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Kara? Seconded by Flo, any questions on that?
Yeah.
Yes?
Is this taking a place, this is the senior class trip that's normally would take from Florida?
Yes. Yes, I think it's nicer, it's definitely different this year.
And the interior looks really nice.
Good, good. I think they'll have a great time there, it's a great setting to be in and explore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is the adoption of the budget calendar for the May 16th, 2023 school election and budget vote. May I have a motion on that? Moved by Jason?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan? Any questions on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H is the revision of the Board of Education meeting calendar, February 2023 meeting date. May I have a motion on that? Mike? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any questions?
The date's gonna be the 21st now, is that correct? Because I can't pull it up.
Actually, the date would be Thursday, the 16th. Originally, it was scheduled for the 14th and the 28th, and we said, "Let's just do one meeting," and we put it on the 21st, not realizing that's the week schools close.
Okay, so it's the 16th.
So it's gonna be Thursday, the 16th, because someone told me, "You better not do it on Valentine's Day," so I said, "Yes, ma'am."
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I is the 202223 student calendar for February 13th, 2023. May I have a motion on that? Moved by Bill?
Second.
Seconded by Jason?
Just so you know what this is, in the original calendar, there were three superintendents' conference days scheduled. State law says you can have 176 student days and then four conference days to get you to 180. So Natasha came and said, "We need one more in-service day, we've got a lot of work going on, good stuff." And I said, "Well, we have the perfect day." And it's Monday, February 13th, also known as Super Bowl, Monday the day after Super Bowl. So the kids will not have to come to school the day after the Super Bowl, and everybody else that comes will have a little more relaxed day, doing some curriculum work and things of that nature, so. Unofficial holiday.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, our board member comments, Board Committee reports. Buildings and grounds, we have not had a meeting yet, but I'd like to set that up with John, John Tim, please. DLT, Bill Harris?
Nothing to report.
Nothing, okay. Deer Park Liaison, Flo?
Oh, everything's good at Deer Park. We're having our senior drinking dinner this Saturday, and right now, I think I've got, like, that Bill's catering for us.
Wonderful.
We're gonna be up to 100.
And have a lot of people there.
We have volunteers coming from Port Jervis, Delaware Valley, and Minnesota to help set up the seniors. So everybody, I thank you for volunteering to come. Anybody, anybody can come, join us, it's a great afternoon, especially with the seniors and stuff, if you want to be there.
What's the date of that again?
The 19th, this, this, this Saturday, 11 o'clock setup and 2 o'clock dinner.
Okay, thank you, Flo. Education Committee, Kara?
Thank you, so, Ed Committee met on Wednesday, November 9th, and I'll just share some highlights from that meeting. It's a great committee with administrators, teachers, community members, led by Dr. Walkowitz. So some highlights, report cards, the committee was looking to revamp the report cards just to go with next-gen standards and their most current curriculum mapping. The reading committee, there was a lot of discussion about, there was a strong emphasis on phonics, a lot of discussion around Wilson, which is a phonics program, as well as foundations and just for words. Our district is really on the cutting edge of that research and those programs. Some discussion surrounding the grades 3 through 8 science test, there were some changes in not only the format of the test, but some of the grades in which it's actually administered, so some planning surrounding that. Some discussion on the Rega Math and the digital platform that accompanies that, and just some really neat things that we have the capability of doing, like uploading MAPS scores to create kind of like an individualized, personalized goal-setting plan for students. Committee talked about the SEAL of By Literacy, which is just a really great honor for students to achieve. Dr. Walkowitz talked about how they also can earn that bling, you know, at graduation. It's, it's a state honor, and they can also earn national recognition, just, you know, really significant honor there. We talked about the SEAL of Civic Readiness, and I believe Anthony talked about how on November 17th, grades 9 through 11 will have an assembly about opportunities to volunteer. And that'll tie into a program called Passport for Good, and that's something that will follow the students even after high school, something that will kind of keep a record of all of their volunteering experiences. We talked about MTSS, and I was most impressed with this portion of, of the meeting, where the different buildings were talking about all the different ways that they take steps to address the needs of our at-risk students. There were so many wonderful things going on in the buildings. They talked about positive referrals, as parents, we know what it's like to get that phone call, your stomach kind of drops, you know, you're- phone call, your stomach kind of drops, you know, your principal calls or the assistant principal, but then they say, oh, this is a positive referral, we're calling to tell you about this great thing that your child did. And so, that's wonderful. Some of the schools are sending home positive postcards, just, just great things, you know, for those PBIS, those positive behavior interventions for our students. Let's see, we had updates from the buildings, there were a lot of discussion, discussions and conversation around data and how our district is using data. And finally, there is going to be a survey that they will be sending out to parents, teachers, students, I believe in the upcoming weeks, and it's the same survey as last year, and it's to track the growth and see the progress that we've made since that survey, so just be sure to take that and submit it. Actually, I did get that survey, so I think we already received it. That's all for anything, thank you.
Thank you very much, Kara, great report. Next is health and wellness, Flo? Okay.
Hello? Test, I always love to do that. Test, love to. Okay, so, the policy meeting, we had a recent one last week, however, the minutes to the policy meeting in October were not available at our last meeting, so we'll go over those. The date of the meeting was Wednesday, October 19th. There was nothing really under the new business for the agenda, however, we did have a great discussion on some New York State ed guideline changes to the concussion management protocol and our policy number 7522. What we finally decided was that we would consult with Dr. Velasco, who is the medical director for the Bonz Sports Concussion Management Rehabilitation Program, to get his input on some of the changes and how we would approach it, and we also decided we would wait for Erie One to amend their current sample policy, and we would then, you know, reevaluate, so no action was taken at that time. There was also discussion I had received, correspondence from Tracy West Barnes from the high school, requesting that we revisit our policy number 7215, which is in regard to middle and high school course grading that was adopted in December of 2020. There were specific concerns on the grading when it comes to half-year courses. There was a very spirited discussion on both sides of the issue, and in the end, Dr. Bell said he would really discuss it with the administrative team, particularly again about the half-year courses, so therefore, no action was taken at that time, and we'll revisit it when needed. We were also approached by middle school principal, Mr. Andrew Marata, regarding adding therapy animals to our existing policy number 3450, which our policy refers to the use of service animals. Back in 2022, February, we, the committee, read and reviewed the policy from Erie One Bosse's regarding this, and at that time, there was a lot of discussion on it, but there were a lot of concerns regarding the AKC certification, insurance, other requirements for the dog handler and the specific dog. And at this particular time, we just felt unless it was specific to the well-being of a student, with construction going on in the middle school, that there was a big space crunch right now, so that we would table it for the time being, but willing to revisit it if needed. We then proceeded to review policy number 5412 on alternative formats for instructional materials. We are certainly in compliance, so that was largely reviewed for the date. Policy number 5570 on financial accountability. Policy number 5575 on Medicaid compliance. You can see, this is a whirlwind of interesting topics we go through. And policy number 5241 on property tax exemptions. We changed and updated some of the verbiage, and they're all on tonight, the next agenda for our first read, and the minor amendments. Other than that, that is all. Thank you.
Dan, thank you very much, Dan. Let's see, next is Orange County School Board, Phil?
I was taking ill before the last meeting.
Okay. New York State, Flo?
Yes. As you all know from last meeting, I did go up to Syracuse. I was up there from October 27th, 28th, and 29th. Very interested, got a lot of information. I'm still trying to pack it together with the board members and the classes that I went to, and I did go to classes.
I can vouch for that.
Every time he saw me, I'm going, I'm going to this, and I'm going to this, I'm very interested, by solar, by what we could do in our community. We were talking about other things before, but one of the, one of the things that got me was what you could do with your community and the school, and they have vote vaccine, where you would set up a unit where you would have nurses or doctors or whatever, just to give out vaccines when you vote. And I said, that is just so, so it was a whole course, but I'm gonna try and get everything all written down, I've just been a little busy with the other job, with the lessons and stuff. But, the knowledge that they have there, we had a keynote speaker on Friday morning, and what, we had Marlene Madlin, is that correctly? For what she did in her life of being deaf and, yeah, hard of hearing and speech, I mean, she had a interpreter, and he did the sign language for everything she said, it was just awesome. To know that she came this far in her life, Academy Awards, and she was 18 when she won her first award, was absolutely unattainable, what she did. But, I did learn a lot, and I won't pass it on to the board, if anybody else wants to hear from me. I'll let you know when it comes around in January, and thank you for sending me there, I really did a lot, and it did bring home a little drinking.
Flo, thank you, and thanks for going and representing the Orange School District, along with Dr. Bell. Next, our board member comments, Bill Harris? Mike? Flo?
I'm good. Well, you know what? Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, health and happiness with your family and friends.
Kara?
I just want to thank the students who presented this evening as proud parent of Uka Lupa number three, I cannot wait to see you in court hours in a few weeks.
Yes.
Break a leg.
Excellent, yes, thank you. Jason?
Yes, I do. Obviously, I'm gonna echo everybody with the accomplishments of our fall athletes this year, most notably our varsity football team. Congratulations on their championship, but I'd like to bring note to another Port Jervis team that's been flying under the radar, all right? I'm gonna talk about the Port Jervis youth football team, coming out of the league. Our D2 boys, our D2 Raiders are going to the championship this Saturday. They'll be playing at 1 o'clock at Marlboro High School. They went 7-1 for their regular season, they defeated Valley Central and Middletown in the playoffs, okay? These boys wear Raiders on their jersey, couldn't be prouder of them. The fact that it's not a scholastic team and fed through the youth program, I think we can all acknowledge how our youth program, whether it's the old Pop Warner up to youth football now, how it translates into what our boys are doing when we get into the high school. Okay, so if you're in the building this week, pass along your support to those kiddos. They also started in August, and you might have saw them outside in the snow tonight. They're working, they believe in themselves, they believe in each other, they believe in their team, they believe in poor pride in their community. Give it back to them, they're super pumped. Like I said, if you're in the building, please give them the support. If you're not in the building, can't make the trip, I do believe WDLC will be broadcasting the game, so tune in and root for them.
That's great, that's great stuff, very nice. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you for your efforts with that, too.
Judy?
I just want to wish everybody a great, happy Thanksgiving.
Dan?
I just want to reiterate everything that Jason said. You know, sometimes you forget, and you don't realize that these programs that everybody works so hard for feed every single year as these kids grow up, and that's why we have the teams we have.
Just to acknowledge, these are your fifth and sixth graders.
Very nice. To all the teams in Port Jervis, you know, good luck and congratulations, and I have, as many of you know, I have a special place in my heart for the arts, and I wasn't that long ago that my 26-year-old was, played Willy Wonka in Willy Wonka Junior, so it was pretty exciting to see the kids, and I just, I grin from ear to ear because it takes me back, so good luck, and that was wonderful to watch.
Thank you, Dan. And I just want to take a minute to personally thank, and I think the board would agree with this, to Dr. Bell, John Tim, and Don Priest for their outstanding efforts and everything that we've been going through with this project. I mean, we got off to a rocky start, there was a lot of issues, a lot of problems, they're, you know, starting to level out now, but without their efforts and their, I'm telling you, the extra time this has taken them is unbelievable, on top of all their other duties, and I just, I just want to thank them immensely for this. Yeah, I know, but, you know. Okay, next, our dates to remember. Thursday, November 17th is Financial Aid Night, 6:00 p.m. at the Port Jervis High School Friday, November 18th is Volunteer Fair School Day at the Port Jervis High School. Monday and Tuesday, November 21st and 22nd, half-day, p.m. day, p.m., half-day, p.m. day, Superintendent Conference Day at High School, Middle School, ASK, and HBE. Monday, the 21st, parent-teacher conferences begin after dismissal at all schools. Monday, November 21st, Veterans Assembly, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the HBE Cafeteria. Wednesday through Friday, November 23rd to 25th is Thanksgiving recess, schools are closed. Tuesday, November 29th is the HBE Drama Preview at the High School for grades 3 through 6 from 9:30 to 11:30 at the High School. And Tuesday, November 29th, HBE Drama Preview at HBE for grades K through 2, from 2:00 to 2:45 at HBE. Thursday, December 1st is the Port Jervis Middle School Virtual Parent-Student Meet, 7:00 p.m., Google Classroom. Friday, December 2nd, HBE Drama Opening Night of Wonka Junior, that's at 7:00 p.m. at the High School Auditorium. Saturday, December 3rd is the HBE Drama Two Show Times at Wonka, 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. at the High School Auditorium. Tuesday, December 6th is the Port Jervis High School Winter Concert Band and Choir, 7:00 p.m. at the High School Auditorium. Wednesday, December 7th, ASK PTA, 7:00 p.m. at the ASK Library. Thursday, December 8th is the Middle School Winter Concert, 7:00 p.m. at the High School Auditorium. Friday, December 9th, Port Jervis Middle School IMCA Beat the Streets Program, 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. in the ASK Gym. Friday, December 9th is Elementary Schools Tri semester, first ends, ASK and HBE. Monday, December 12th, Elementary Schools Tri Master II begins at ASK and HBE. Tuesday, December 13th, ASK Family Holiday Shop, from 3:30 to 6:30 p.m. at the ASK Library. December 13th, ASK Winter Concert, 7:00 p.m. at the High School Auditorium. December 13th, Port Jervis High School PTSA Meeting, 7:00 p.m., High School Room 133. Also, on December 13th, it's Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m., which will be held at the ASK Cafeteria. With that, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Moved by Flo?
Second.
Seconded by Jason.